Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is September the 10th of 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
..................
As we come together this evening, let us all remember that we are here to work together and to make wise decisions for the good of our community. Amen. Mike Soprani, we so appreciate you back there. Thank you for supporting us always. Mayor Lehner does have an excused absence this evening. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to approve the minutes?
I would. I have read and reviewed the council meeting and workshop minutes from August 27th, 2024. I find them in order and I move for approval.
Second. Any questions, concerns? Call your...
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes. This evening, we're very honored to have our Holiday at Home crew under the leadership of Lisa Rucker. And so Lisa, I understand you have a presentation for us. Come forward, please, with your team.
Hi, I'm president of Holiday at Home this year, and it is my deep pleasure to thank you so much for everything the city of Kettering and the city council has done for us to be able to make sure we were able to have a great event last weekend. Thank you so much to our police and the firefighters who keep us safe all year, but also during the Labor Day weekend. I would also personally like to show my appreciation to Vice Mayor Fisher and Captain Clint Price for judging our scholarship applicants. Without you, it wouldn't have happened. And our committee chair for parade would also like to say a few words.
I just want to say thank you to everyone, city council, and especially the mayor's office and Amy for helping us out for the weekend, making sure that I'm, you know, doing what I'm supposed to do. The police department, I appreciate their help. They're not here tonight, but in getting us an escort, well, part of them is here tonight, in getting us an escort to and from the parade route at 4:00 in the morning or 4:30, it really means a lot. I do want to say one thing, that it is in our bylaws that the only people that are allowed to, the only elected officials are, of course, you guys, and we do not allow any political entries into the parade. So it's in our bylaws that that is a no-no. So just in case people, we've been getting some emails, and it's in our bylaws that no political things. We had a couple of incidents, so I just want to apologize if that bothered some people, because I take it very seriously. So again, we had a great weekend, and I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. That is a grand weekend. All of us have a great time the whole weekend. I know your team works diligently all year long, and I know they give it their all on that weekend, and they're exhausted by the end of the weekend. So we appreciate you. We do have a proclamation this evening for EcoFest. Mr. Sullivan?
All right. Okay, I have a proclamation here for EcoFest. Whereas the city of Kettering is excited to participate in the third annual event for EcoFest, and whereas EcoFest was developed as a way to expand the resources that were available at Honeyfest by continuing to advocate sustainability efforts beyond our local pollinators. And whereas EcoFest will highlight a variety of sustainability endeavors, including compost and recycling, repurposing, gardening, green energy, and river conservation. And whereas EcoFest is committed to the longevity of the Kettering community by making a pledge to help eliminate our carbon footprint by encouraging participants to bring their own water bottles to refill at water stations instead of utilizing plastic water bottles. That's a great idea. And whereas there will be educational activities for all ages to help inspire the next generation of conservationists, and whereas educating all members of the Kettering community about the importance of conservation will continue to improve the quality of life for all residents in the community. Now therefore Peggy Lehner, the mayor of the city of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, does hereby proclaim September 14th, 2024 to be EcoFest Day in the city of Kettering, Ohio, and urges all citizens to recognize the importance of conservation and sustainability to help protect the scenic beauty of our beloved community.
And we have Carrie Miles coming to accept this proclamation, and I bet she might have one or two things to say. Not you.
I get excited just hearing all those words. Thank you very much. Very, very nice. I've been doing my job for the city of Kettering, environmental ed. This is my 20th year, and it's come a long way. I used to not be able to say global warming or climate change. It was too political. And now here we are talking about and having an EcoFest. And I want to say thank you for all the support that the city has given, all the efforts we're making. We're making some big strides even now as we speak. EcoFest is a nice little event, family-friendly, kid-friendly. We're trying to start, well, I've been doing it for 20 years, training the kids to train the parents, you know, to do the right thing, because we don't, you know, we don't. And we have to make better choices. And thank you, I mean, even beekeeping. We have beekeeping. Other cities don't have it. They say, how do you get to do that? I'm like, we have great people in the city of Kettering. So I just, I just really appreciate the efforts that we've, we've taken. We have a little ways to go, but we're getting there. And thank you guys for everything. Appreciate it. Try to come Saturday if you can.
I was going to say, everybody better be showing up on Saturday. I'll see everybody out there on Saturday.
It's 11 to 3, so you have a four-hour little block of time. You don't stay the whole time. Bring your refillable water bottles and your little sticker. And if you bring your animal, your, your dog, or your cat, or your rabbit, or your cat, dress as a pollinator, you'd be entered in a little prize drawing.
Oh, that is awesome.
It's nothing big, but it's still fun, so.
I only have a spider costume for my, one of my dogs.
Oh, I thought you were going to bring a spider. That'd be a little costume. Yeah, well, it's not really a pollinator, but it'd be cute.
Carrie, I don't want to put you on the spot, because maybe we're not doing it this year. Should I say that? But last year, we did the Halloween costume recycle, or like kind of...
Be green for Halloween. We're doing that again.
We're going to do that again. That was amazing. That's where my daughters got their Halloween costumes, so.
Well, the front of the activity guide has somebody's child on it.
Yeah, oh, that's Ryberg.
Yeah, little dinosaur outfit. He just got it that little. So people have donated costumes. You can bring costumes, gently use. You can pick one up, drop some off. So we're just trying to encourage people to, to not go out and buy stuff all the time, but to recycle, reuse, repurpose, and all that. It's just every little bit helps, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. And, and if you eat candy, we have candy wrapper recycling. So we will have a little bit of that there. All right, you guys. Well, thank you. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, Carrie. We appreciate you. We appreciate you. It'll be good. It'll be good. So public hearings, we have none this evening. Next, we will have public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there'll be an opportunity to be heard later. Anyone have any comments for legislation? Okay, seeing none. Ordinances and second reading, there are none. And so now we're going to go ahead with resolutions. Mr. Sullivan?
All right. Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the state of Ohio and a third-party independent public accountant for the audit services, for audit services for audit years 2024 through 2028. The estimated cost and the funds available are $44,100, and this is requested by the finance department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, your honor. Almost as exciting as EcoFest and Holiday at Home, we, the Ohio auditor, no, I'm joking. The Ohio Auditor of State has performed a competitive process for the selection of our third-party independent accountant that does our audit. They selected, and we have some involvement in the process, Plattenburg and Associates, based on the evaluation process that the state lays out. It's a five-year contract with the option to extend up to an additional five years if approved by the auditor of state. The cost proposal sets the audit fees, and the total cost for all five years is $232,260. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids and to contract for Governor's Place Improvement City Project Number 01-507E. This is being requested by the engineering department, and the estimated cost is 1,000, I'm sorry, $1,200,000, and there is no amount budgeted for this. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Berksstrasser?
Thank you. This is a new capital improvement project for 2024, and it will extend into 2025 for construction. But what it will involve is really the first major maintenance upgrade that we've made to the Governor's Place development since its inception in the late 1990s or the 2000s. We have a tax increment financing district over that development, which generates taxable revenue that can be used for capital improvements, either when the development is first created or maintenance of the development over the life of the TIF, which is about 30 years. So we have accumulated enough funds in that, in that, enough money in that fund that we are now in the position to make significant repairs to the concrete areas along the Boulevard, as well as more significantly, area improvements to the park area within Governor's Place. So we are anticipating to bid this project in October. Like I said, most construction probably takes place over the winter and especially in the next spring with the planting. Later in the agenda, there'll be a supplemental preparation to approve the funds for this project, but for, for now, this resolution will authorize us to bid and contract for it. You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Division of EMS. Estimated cost is $3,392.36, is requested by the fire department, and I do move for approval.
Second. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, your honor. Because we use a comprehensive records management system which meets the state's requirements for electronic EMS reporting, we are able to apply for this annual grant. If we get it, we'll use it to purchase emergency medical equipment. There are no matching funds required by the city, and I'll ask the chief if he wants to add anything.
That pretty much covers it, sir. We, we do this every year for reporting to the state directly through electronic reporting for EMS records. This offsets some of the cost of the records management system we have to utilize to report, then we use it for training and equipment, and it has to be spent this year.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Stryker Corporation for the purchase of LifePak 35 monitors. The estimated cost for this is $500,000. There is no amount budgeted. This is requested by the fire department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, your honor. I'll let the chief in a second talk about what, what we do with our LifePak 35 monitors and why they're important to us, but we budgeted their replacement in 2025 for $500,000. However, the, the costs we know are going to go up, and so we are asking to be able to go early and make that purchase early. We think by going in 2024 to purchase it, we'll save about $50,000 over if we wait to when we had it originally programmed. Be glad to answer any questions, but I'll turn it over to the chief to talk so that he can educate you on what, what LifePak...
So LifePak 35 monitors are cardiac monitors. That's where we synchronize cardiovert, D-Fib, put persons on the cardiac monitor, determine whether they're having a heart attack or a significant medical event. And with that tracing, we can transmit directly to the hospital, the ED, and then they can call in a cath lab from home, get someone in and get the cath lab team brought in for home after hours. It's one of our most critical pieces of equipment. We have wanted to purchase these for several years. We currently have LifePak 15s, and those have been end-of-life for greater than three or four years. But with COVID, the FDA testing got shut down for this new device. We had to wait for the new device to be tested, authorized through the FDA. It's now approved, and we can now purchase it. And then, as the city manager said, this purchase will save the city about $50,000 purchasing it this year versus waiting until January and purchase it.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a special projects grant from the Montgomery County Arts and Culture District. The amount, the estimated cost is $9,924. It's not yet budgeted, and is recommend, this is requested by the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Berksstrasser?
Thank you. The Roosevelt Arts Center has received a special projects grant from Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District, which is administered through Culture Works. This grant cycle is for the upcoming fiscal year of 2025. We will use the funding to program support for the printmaking for all series of programmings which highlights printmaking. You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase television, radio, newspaper, billboard, and internet advertising for the 2025 Phrase Pavilion Performance Season from various sources. The estimated cost and the included in the 2025 budget, sorry, the estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $134,000. This is requested by the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Berksstrasser?
Thank you. This resolution and the next two are related to the 2025 Phrase Pavilion Performance Season. It might seem a little odd that we are talking about the 2025 season when we are not yet done with the 2024 season. However, with the way that booking and scheduling of musical acts, performing acts works, they, the performers actually are now trying to book their seasons for the, the upcoming summer next year. And so in order to stay on top of their schedules and the booking competition, we would like to have authorization to book the acts, which is the second resolution, advertise for the acts as they are booked and confirmed, which is this resolution, and then also the ticketing and promotion and programming of the season, which is the third resolution. So be happy to answer any other questions about this one specifically, and then the next two as they come through.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into contracts for entertainment for the Phrase Pavilion 2025 Performance Season. The estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $2,800,000. This is being requested by Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Any additional comments?
No, ma'am. Only that I'll mention, the estimated cost of $2.8 million is what we expect to spend on the entertainment or the acts for the upcoming season.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
In keeping with the phrase theme, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements for discounts, complimentary tickets, and complimentary program participation to benefit the advertising and promotion of calendar year 2025 Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts programs and the 2025 Phrase Pavilion Performance Season. This is requested by the Parks Department and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Any additional comments?
Yes, the only thing I'll add is that city staff and city council are unfortunately not able to participate in these types of promotions and discounts, but otherwise, we will use this to help promote the 2025 Performance Season. You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. The estimated cost is $3,326,398.36. Not, and this is not a general fund transfer. This is requested by the finance department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, your honor. There are three supplemental appropriation items here. The first requires a little bit of explanation. You may recall that we purchased through Axon Enterprise tasers, in-car cameras, and body worn cameras and related software. This supplemental appropriation will help us comply with governmental accounting standards and treat the present value of future payments, because we're going to pay for that equipment over time as a lease. So it'll be recorded as a capital outlay in the fund statements, and it's a non-crash transaction. The lease will be amortized over the lease term with future cash payments recorded as debt service in the general fund. This is not new money. You've already committed to make this acquisition. We've committed to pay it. We need to book it from an accounting standpoint as a lease. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisher?
Yes.
Ordinances and first reading, we have none. Certifications and petitions, Ms. Hesley?
Your honor, we have no certifications or petitions this evening.
Mr. Grayson, time for your report, please.
Yes. We've got, pull it up. Oh, it's already up. I can't see it through the flag. I'm sorry. Coming to the phrase, we have, as Mr. Berksstrasser said, we're already talking about 2025, but we have a great remainder of the 2024 season. This Friday, Dylan Scott, Sunday, Ringo Starr, and obviously EcoFest, which we just talked about, and Breakfast with the Beatles. We encourage people to contact us at the various avenues on the screen to purchase tickets for these outstanding events. EcoFest does not require a ticket. It is for free, and as our wonderful Carrie Miles talked about, it's a beloved event, and we encourage families and, and people of all ages to attend. I think we've talked a little bit about it before, but the tot shop sale is Saturday, September 14th. We think there's an opportunity to save. It's a vendor sale for, exclusively for people ages newborn to 12. There'll be toys, books, games, clothing, furniture, and more. And so if you're a parent or a grandparent with kids those ages, please, there might be an opportunity for you to purchase something great. Vice Mayor Fisher talked about the Cycle Kettering Community Ride, 3 to 5, September 26th is one of those rides. Leisurely 10 to 15-mile ride. We encourage people 18 and over to attend. We're already getting calls and questions about Shred Day, which is an opportunity to shred your documents, and also Montgomery County will be working with us to recycle Styrofoam. It's in the parking lot at Fairmont High School, 9:00 AM to noon. Much more fun than the audit that I talked about earlier in my humor there. Creep, crawl, scavenger hunt. Get your buddies together and go on a daring hunt around Kettering and the greater Dayton area to locate and learn more about creepy landmarks, buildings, and graveyards in your own backyard. You know, I think we come up with all kinds of fun ways for people to be engaged and build community, and this is one of them. There's a small cost to residents or non-residents, September 30th through October 29th. Creepy crawl scavenger hunt. We also, our team put together an amazing puzzle race, October 5th, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Grab a teammate, get ready to showcase your puzzle-solving skills. If you want to register, you can go to playkettering.org. There's a small cost to a resident team and not, or a non-resident team. Glad to answer any questions, your honor, but a diverse array of activities and events continuing to happen in Kettering.
Yes, there are. We are now at this part in the agenda that if you would like to come speak before city council, please come to the podium. Each speaker has five minutes. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before council this evening? You guys are not running up here, but you stayed for the meetings, and we appreciate that. We appreciate that. Council reports. Mr. Sullivan?
Sure. I wanted to talk about, so our strategic plan that we adopted not so long ago, one of the major goal areas is economic opportunity, and there's a lot of exciting things to talk about in economic opportunity. I wanted to spotlight something. So at the Research Park, if you've read the newspaper, there's a lot of exciting things happening out there. I wanted to spotlight something on a different part of town. The old Fussnucker, Fussnecker Sweepers building. I drive that way all the time to pick up my kids from school, and that building's been empty for many years. So I'm excited that we acquired that property, we demolished that property, and today when I drove by, it's a blank canvas for hopefully another great Kettering business to come open their doors. And so, you know, I talk to people all the time around the community who does not like seeing the vacant buildings in Kettering, the vacant businesses. So it's just, I'm encouraged by seeing our city be a little proactive and go after one of these buildings and, and flip it and make it a positive for our cities. It helps with safety. It helps with the appearance of that neighborhood, and, you know, hopefully it'll be a neat business that we'll want to use, and it'll help with livability in that way. So I was encouraged by that, but it's easy for us to sit up here and talk about vacant buildings around the city. So I just wanted to commend the staff who does the hard work, the day-to-day stuff, because that's really important. And I like that we're being proactive. I like that we're being aggressive, but not reckless. We're being wise in our decisions, and I think the community, I think the public will appreciate that, too. So hats off to the, that little project and all the big projects that are happening at Research Park. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Just want to say thank you to you guys for all the work you did for the Holiday at Home event. It's a really great event. Appreciate your care for the city in that way, and that, looking forward to rooting for Fairmont in their game against Centerville on Friday. That's it for me.
Excellent. Mr. Scott?
I want to put a little different slant on my Shop Kettering deal, kind of piggyback on what Ms. Hall said. We have our annual battle with our rivals to the South, and I would like economically people to support the Kettering-Fairmont Firebirds by A, going to the game and buying a ticket, B, spending money at concession stand, and C, putting dollars on the spirit chain.
Amen on the spirit.
In my last 50-some years of following Fairmont, we've had few and far between Centerville wins. Let's get one this year.
All right, Ms. DuVal. This weekend was the Kettering Leadership Kickoff to the Year. It was our retreat, and I have some bad news for Chief Robbins. He was in my class, 2019. We are getting a run for our money on the best class ever. This retreat was amazing. This class is phenomenal, and it's going to be an absolutely amazing year. And I, Brian, I want you to know, and Captain Savino, you are checked off for your public meeting requirement. We are, you're well on your way. Also, I just want to say to the Holiday at Home team, when you guys, when, when you said that about the bylaws and the elected officials, I thought we were about to get yelled at for having kids on the float. So thank you for not doing that. And that's all.
Mr. Suddith?
A few things. First, the Board of Community Relations...
A few things. First, the Board of Community Relations is, they're, they're very busy. I, I thought there'd be like cycles of busyness and, and slowness. There's not. They're just always busy. They've received twenty-one nominations for the Neighbor of the Year Award, which is by far their expectations, and the team is busily reviewing those applications, and we look forward to that announcement next month as we award those. So that's, the BCR is working right now. And it's also, starting this weekend, is the beginning of National Hispanic Heritage Month on the fifteenth, and the art contest between, with BCR in partnership with Rosewood continues. So if they're students or parents of artists, they're still taking those applications through the beginning of October. So BCR is very busy. Also, just thanks again to everything you guys did to host us. We just show up and sit on a comfortable bench on a float, and the team from Highfield are just amazing and so gracious to make sure that we're safe and comfortable, and it's just, just really neat. The, we're going to rename the parade as the Shane Sullivan Recognition Parade.
Absolutely, absolutely.
He had people strategically placed every fifty feet to yell out his name. I didn't plan ahead. I had two, and one was, was my family, so it just counts half. But so thank you just for taking care of us in such a great way, and for the Highfield team for bringing out their crew to drive us safely, and just the care that they give to us. So thank you, and please let the Highfield family know. We appreciate them.
Great.
That's all I got.
Well, we're, we are on a theme, but I'm going to give a couple shouts out in another direction. I want to give a shout to Shane and Jill for coming to the VIP reception, and a shout out to Brian for coming to the gala. I will tell you that my, my uplift is the street cleaners after the parade's over, and the two folks that empty those trash cans all day long. They are so busy. And it, and it is that finer detail of our staff coming out and taking that extra attention to detail, which makes it very clean, no, you know, not a trashy event or anything at all. And, and I, I think that's the extra sweet touch that goes with that whole weekend as well. So with that, being no other further business to come before the city council, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be September the twenty-fourth, and this meeting's adjourned.